Good evening, everyone. Hello and welcome to the February Macomb Park Board of Commissioners meeting. And as always, we're going to start with the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Like to move so.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, and the agenda stands approved. Uh, moving on to consideration of and action on the minutes from the, uh, what did I just say, February? January, month of January. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions?
There should be a correction.
Okay.
To the minutes. Let me get there. There's a section under President's Report. Uh, Section Five of the Minutes. It reads President Hemingway. That should be, in fact, President Weiss. Took a moment to honor the Lake Valencia Pentagon.
Alright. Alright, that being said, and has been adjusted, uh... Is there a... Yeah, is it? Sorry about that. That's weird. Random. Alright, so, uh, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright, is there a second? Alright, it's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve the minutes, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, and the minutes stand approved. Uh, bills and transfers and monthly financial statements. Commissioner Hamm, please.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to, once again, remind, uh, the other new board members and others, um, about the report that, uh, with the new fiscal year, starting in January, that, uh, the same information that's given for the monthly is the same for the year. Um, I mostly report on the consolidated fund, general fund, and a few other reports during the monthly meetings. Want to remind them that, uh, the general fund, this is account that the pros- proceeds from the annual board, uh, issuance goes into. Out of this account, the payments for the long-term debt are made. This account is the one where new equipment purchases, park improvements, capital lease, and project-related payroll is paid from. Uh, within this fund is the capital projects, board, uh, excuse me, bond retirement and savings. Uh, the bond retirement fund is where the taxes collected to pay off the previous-year bond are held until they are paid. Uh, quick, uh, briefly about the general fund. I want to mention that this is an account that is used for the day-to-day operation for the Park District. From this account, things like the utility bills, office supplies, phone bills, immaterial and supplies are paid from. Uh, there are, um, at the time, eleven separate funds that make up the general fund, which, uh, are corporate, unemployment, liabilities, workers' comp, the audit, uh, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Social Security, police, paving and lighting, the rec- general and special recreation accounts. Uh, this is the fund that the non-project payroll comes out of. Uh, program registrations, shelter rentals, and monies, uh, to play mini-golf's and use of the driving range are some examples of the revenues for this fund, the general fund. So with that, um, I want to mention that to start, uh, the cash on hand, uh, in the capital projects, uh, was three hundred and, uh, excuse me, total was, uh, with, excuse me, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and some change. And then the, uh, savings and, uh, dedicated funds, there was forty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, and fifty thousand at the end of the month, for a total of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, seventy-eight cents. Uh, for the general fund, uh, we ended with, uh, January on hand, three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars in cash, um, of which, three hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars in the general fund, uh, two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six thousand was in savings. Overall, uh, for the budget, we were eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars better than the projections. Uh, the corporate account, the end of January, was nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars better than budget. The recreation account, overall, we ended two hundred and twenty-seven dollars better than budget. For Lakeview, overall, twenty-five dollars ahead of budget. For Ball Four, which, you know, revenue is really coming in, the expenses ran four hundred and twenty-four dollars more than budget. Uh, for special rec, there are basically three accounts, overall. Um, everything was pretty much, um, ended, um, below the, the budget for revenues and below the expenses for an overall one thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dat- dollars, excuse me, one thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars better than the budget for the month for those three, uh, accounts. For the police, um, we ended the budget, uh, ex- uh, revenues, uh, were on budget. Expenses ended two hundred and eighty-six dollars below the expected numbers. And finally, for payroll, we ended the month, six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars below budget.
Alright.
So I'd like it to be read into the record.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Russ. Are there any questions for Commissioner Hamm? Alright, um, if there are no questions, I, a motion to approve bills and transfers and the monthly financial statements.
Show them up.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamish?
Aye.
Alright. Moving on to Agenda Number Four, open, uh, public presentations to the commissioners, and we do not have anyone, uh, scheduled for that. Uh, so we'll move on to the next, which is the President's Report, and, uh, I'm good. So, we're gonna, I know, so we're gonna move right on into Director's Report.
Alright, um, I tried to keep mine, uh, fairly brief today. Uh, we have the annual Daddy Daughter Dance coming up this Friday, um. Erin has done a fabulous job planning and doing a, um, a s- well, circus thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, based off of The Greatest Showman, so registration's still open, um, for people who are looking for something fun to do with their little one on Friday night. Uh, over at the Screen River Outreach Center, this is a great, uh, a great program and one that we look forward to every year, so, um... There are a lot of other programs going on, like I mentioned last month, um, they're just thoughtful because Natalie's a rock star and we can't keep her programs open, so, um, Ceramics is doing extremely well, she, her first Prairie School, which was freezing, uh, it's like, well, freezing, but it was pretty cold. Um, it was extremely well-intended, uh, we anticipate, uh, parking problems in the near future out at Lakeview Nature Center, so, but it's a great problem to have. Um, and are thrilled with the work that Natalie continues to do out at Lakeview, um. And as directed through the, uh, resolution last month, um, we are, uh, trying to find as many different changes that we can make throughout the district to have more marine operations. Um, so, here is, actually, we just take one down and rest around. This one's yours. Oh, it is passing. Um, so, these are a few pieces of, um, be, be the change, uh, starter kit kind of for you guys, there'll be more to come. But, these are the things that we will be handing out to the public, encouraging people not to use plastic bags. Uh, so we'll be providing canvas bags, in there you also have a water bottle, um, to reduce your, some of your use of plastic consumption, and also a reusable straw, and a fun piece about the reusable straw is it comes with a little cleaning brush on the inside. So, um, you know, every time you go through a drive-thru, it, even if you're getting a disposable cup, you can say, "No straw, thanks, I care." Um, but yeah, so, these are a few pieces, we'll have some more to come for you guys. Um, we're coming across random different pieces all the time. Um, randomly saw Swedish washcloths in Galesburg, and so now Erin is exploring, um, for giving something for the public to be part of, you know, so to get rid of paper towel usage and all the different pieces. You know, it's, it's just amazing that many things that we can change that are so small that we overlook on, on the daily that have huge environmental impact, um. I believe, again, I keep pointing at you because you're present, but, um, Erin's just recently tried out Thredup, which is a, uh, online thr- uh, thrift, so to, to, um, reduce, you know, buying new clothing, and so that's one of our themes, so we're, we're all trying to explore different avenues. Um, we have officially partnered with Rocket Book. Um, they are an international organization that has this really cool product. Um, it's a, it's a notebook that is more like a whiteboard. So, it has several pages, uh, forty-two pages to be exact, seven different templates, and it is all reusable. And there's technology involved with the book, so you can take notes on it, there are little icons at the bottom, you put an X through one of them, there's an app on your smartphone. You turn on the app, and it scans it and sends it to whatever, um, file or shared file or whatever that you have associated with that icon at the bottom of the page, um, so we're really gonna be pushing, um, uh, getting those out to students or professionals, um. We encourage any business who's interested in Macomb and having, uh, the only no- notebook you will ever need for the rest of your life. Um, Rocket Book has been awesome at partnering with us, they're giving us, uh, quite a deal on the book, and they even, uh, um, personalized it for us by putting the Be The Change logo on it, so...
Very nice.
Yeah, we're, again, it's, it's really great to see an international agency see the purpose in what we're trying to do in a small town like Macomb, Illinois, so, uh, very, very thankful for that partnership. Um, other things that we're doing, we're still changing overall of our lights and fixtures to LED, um, I think next on the dock is Ball Four. We're looking into some other unique lighting opportunities for Ball Four to kind of help reduce beyond just switching to LED, um. But those are still very much pending, so I won't say much more about that. Um, to reduce our paper towel usage, we've recently bought, uh, hand dryers, so we're gonna slowly see most of our bathrooms go to hand-drying systems. Um, and I'm looking into a lot of other green infrastructure that we could implement in the district that is reasonable, um, you know, one step at a time. So, green infrastructure is something that I'm not very familiar with, um, so I've reached out to a few people that I know have potential expertise in it, um, Chris Enroth is a great, uh, friend of the Park District, so he's a wealth of knowledge when it comes to, um, uh, plants and, uh, I would assume, green infrastructure, I don't know, he hasn't responded to my email yet, but it was just a thought of mine, so, um, yeah, lots more to come, um, lots more to learn. But it's, yeah, it's been a fun ride so far, so, um, just a reminder to people, the weather is starting to get nice, thank goodness. Um, but for those days that we have rainy weather or snow and you see the gates close, that is to prevent, um, people coming in and using the parks as a drag racing track. Uh, that's caused us a lot of damage in the parks and, uh, a lot of costs, and we are looking at trying to minimize costs as, and minimum wage continues to go up. So, the park is still opened, even though the gate is closed, um, feel free to park outside the gate. But that is, um, why those gates are closed. And then, uh, youth league season is upon us, so I've had several meetings now with, uh, Little League and, um, cats I just still have an email from, and soccer's reached out, so we're almost there. Sun's gonna be shining here pretty soon, so we're pretty excited to see the parks come alive again. Um, start making some changes, continuing to build on the striving for excellence in our parks, one step at a time, so. That's good.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, I forgot one, I'm so sorry. Last but not least, um, for the re- remaining couple of days that's left in February, uh, there are reusable bags also at Hy-Vee that they're selling. They say, "Does this bag make my heart look big?" because they are charity bags, and right now, if you buy a reusable charity bag at Hy-Vee in the month of Sept- or February, um, a dollar goes to the MCSRA, the Special Rec Association.
Awesome.
So, if you don't have a Be The Change bag, or if you need more than one reusable bag, please go to Hy-Vee, it supports, um, our Special Olympus program and all the daily programs that they do, um, for the individuals with disabilities in our area, so, and the great programs that Just puts on.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks to Hy-Vee for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes.
Director Lance. Alright, uh, next up on our agenda, uh, we have an informational, uh, presentation, uh, from, uh, Heather McMeacon. Uh, she is the President of the Democratic Women of McDonough County. And just a quick, uh, quick reminder, um, this is an informational, uh, presentation only. Uh, and so because of time constraints, uh, if the, um, the board, we request, uh, a maximum time of ten minutes. And, uh, if there are any questions or, uh, discussions from the commissioners, just, uh, bring them to me after the meeting. Okay? Alright. Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, thank you all for giving us this time. I apologize that we weren't able to get here last time, we just had a lot of logistical issues with being really busy, but, um... So, this proposal that we're bringing to you actually came out of a conversation that we had with Fred Greenwood, who is the President of the Obama Legacy Initiative up north. And I've been on that board for several years. And one of the projects that we do through the Obama Legacy Initiative is they have something called O.L.I.G.D. Gardens, and they've helped people set up gardens and raise flower beds in, um, food deserts and places where fresh food is hard to find. And he came down and talked to our group for our Environmental Justice Coalition. And one of the nice things about our group and them women, we have over almost a hundred members just in this community. So we have members who work in housing, members who work in law enforcement, members who work in food service, members who work in, at the food banks, they volunteer. So when they hear a good idea, they like to run with it, and they start talking about what life is like for people with food insecurity here. And as difficult, you know, we have a lot of really good people working hard on this issue, but they cannot keep up with the growing need. And as you all know, this is a very, um, impoverished county, it's an impoverished community, and that is expected to get worse as time goes on. Um, the food that we do grow tends to have less nutrient value due to climate change, because it grows faster with greater heat and more carbon dioxide in the environment, and those plants don't take as much time to take up the nutrients from the soil. And also, as food is getting more expensive, because people are having to pay more to, for it to travel, just setting up the ability for people to forage within our own community without having to ask permission first would actually free up, uh, a lot of them to be able to do that, but it's not just about that either. It's also about recreation, it's about racial justice, because, um, and when I talk foraging, foraging actually does mean, i- if you go by the actual definition, it means foraging for wild plants. Um, or things that fall off a tree, you know, your fruits, your nuts. But not necessarily actually going through a cultivated space that would then allow you to pick. But it's close enough for us, um, we love the idea of foraging. There is already a foraging movement in many, many communities, and, uh, pairing that with what we call a food forest. Setting up a food forest, you basically take a lot, uh, and then you set up the upper canopy. The canopy becomes trees, fruit, fruit and nut trees, and then the middle canopy becomes more of your perennial bushes and shrubs. And then you have your ground cover, and those tend to be the annerals, or the patches of asparagus and wildflowers and, uh, other things that you could find on the ground. And we would love to see our city come up with the opportunity to forage. We already have a lot of space, we have a lot of empty lots that the city already owns, that are just sitting there not doing anything. And we would love to see a plan adopted that over time, and one of the things we could do that the Obama Legacy Initiative did, did through their gardens, they partnered with seed companies, so they were able to get seeds to, um, you know, get thousands of seeds donated. So we, we know that through the partnerships that we already have around the state, we could get equipment for it. But let's talk about why we don't already forage in public places, and I'll tell you why. Uh, way back when, uh, initially, all Native Americans were on our continent, would just forage and go wherever they needed to, to hunt game and to, um, you know, take the fruit from the fruit trees and the nuts, and that was no big deal, but then, when white, you know, people came over, we started to say, "Hey, I'm drawing this boundary here, this is mine, anything that comes across my land belongs to me, and I will defend it." And eventually, they started getting shoved out west, and we kind of know how that has turned out, uh, putting a lot of them onto reservations. Um, then the other leg of why we do not forage currently, why we lost our rights, during Reconstruction, after, um, slaves were freed through the Emancipation Proclamation, and then the ones freed finally in Texas, uh, on Juneteenth, were allowed to forage at will, they were allowed to hunt for game. They actually went from being slaves to, many of them hunting and then selling what they would fish or hunt for or gather. And then they realized, "Oh, people don't wanna work on a plantation unless they have to work." So they started enacting legislation to basically ban people from being allowed to gather food in wild public spaces, um, to force them to have to work on a plantation, and then they would go back and do that. Then the other leg is that white people, rural white people, were considered too ignorant over in the Appalachian area. And so wealthy landowners and wealthy people making the laws, tend to be white, decided, "We can't trust how they deal with their land, we're not sure that they're gonna be good stewards, so let's put forth a lot of criminal trespassing laws and keep them out of spaces that we're not sure they should be in." That's how we lost our foraging rights. So re-establishing those, uh, would actually help hunger and food insecurity here. It would raise the level of nutrition, it would decrease the reliance, uh, for three seasons at least. And if we do it right for four seasons on our local food banks, it would increase joy. But also, imagine what it would look like if, a few years from now, when people went to Veterans Park, they could just take a stroll underneath all the electrical lines and go across and pick all the berry bushes that we've got there, and maybe the strawberries on the ground. Though, those areas that are not already cultivated spaces for recreation or for doing other things could easily be walkable paths. And then if those also had a paired activity, uh, we know that gardening is the number-one hobby in the United States, gardening. And we did a straw poll, we have a lot of people who would love to garden but don't have the space. So if little gardens were available and we paired it with resources to help teach them how to do that, we think that over time, what we would see is what we've seen up north with the Obama Legacy Initiative. When they started doing, uh, providing space for gardeners to be able to help, they would just come in and garden because they like to garden, and then they would just donate all the produce. So now they've got some food banks that have so much produce, anyone can come and take it now, because they can't get rid of it fast enough in that area. So if we provided those opportunities, that ability for people to come into these spaces, you'd be able to, to spend that time in recreation and the outdoors, you would get a lot more people who wouldn't normally necessarily use the parks. And I also brought one person, Becky Danner, um, who has a letter that she'd like to read you very briefly about how it would affect her family, um, as an example of how it would affect many families, so Becky?
Oh, I gotta pull that up.
Okay. So, we are hoping that with this plan, that you will give it consideration, knowing that it's a starting conversation. There's a lot of partnerships that would need to come out of it, um, there's a lot of people with expertise and a desire to do goodwill. We would partner as well to try to develop what we call gardening, um, libraries, because at the end of the year, people are selling off stuff to leave school, and they'll often sell shovels for like five bucks. So we think that if we planned for grabbing some of those things at estate sales, we could actually set up, um, sort of a library of things, of gardening tools, and then just make those available. Yes, some will disappear, yes, some people will pick too much, you'll go there and some people will destroy things, and then you use it as a way, a teachable moment, about, well, how do you deal with when somebody has harmed a community that way? You bring people in, you have a gardening bee, you replant, you re-establish the importance of it in the community, and you continue the conversation. Becky, you ready?
Yeah. Having forage in public parks and walkways would benefit my family so much. It would provide us with healthy fruits, nuts, and vegetables that we rarely get from the food pantries and soup and more. I would feel like a better parent if I could provide these things for my child and my husband. It's so difficult to go to the pantries. It really feels like you're reduced as a person, even though you struggle daily to provide the very best for your family. I realize this is not the intent of those who provide the food pantries, that they're trying to help. Um, but people that are desperate to feed themselves and their families, the room quickly fills with negativity and sadness. And as a result of the shortages and economic struggles we are all suffering from, having the ability to take a walk in my community and have a relaxed, at a relaxed pace, we can gather what we need and enjoy our time in nature as well. This is a more positive experience for all. Plus, it teaches people about nature, growing and cultivating foods, and blossoming as a community full of love and inclusion.
Thank you, Becky. We do believe that food is a human right, um, we do believe that all people in our community should be fed. Uh, we don't need to have any qualifiers or judgments on why people are hungry. We just think that providing all people opportunities for it would be good. So, thank you so much for this time. I understand you can't ask questions at this point, but, um, but we'll be happy to, you submit your questions to us, we'll be happy to get you further research, um, or letters of support as, as you seem, however it would be, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Heather, thank you, Becky. Becky or Becca?
Becky.
Becky.
And I don't know if a point is made out of order, but basically, we were given the proposal, each of the commissioners were forwarded that information, so we do have it at our, uh, at our reading and researching it, just wanted to make that point.
Alright, we're now at, uh, Agenda Item Number Eight. Uh, Presentation of Draft Budget and Appropriations Ordin- Ordinance, uh, Number Three Three Five.
Um, so each of you, your email, um, should have perceived the, the draft ordinance. Uh, I believe this one did not go to a specified folder, so it should have just been in your inbox. This is a document that I, um, put together every year. It is a statement as to where I believe our money will be coming in from, to the best of my knowledge, and how it could be spent. This is a very convoluted and clear-as-mud document. Um, Ray spent the better part of thirty years of his career trying to figure out how it works and trying to find another solution, so it made more sense and could not, um, through the many people that he talked with. So, the Section One piece, budget piece, is pretty cut and dry. We go off the numbers of, um, what we're given from the county, and based on previous year's best guesses, we're usually fairly close with this. Section Two, the appropriations piece, we have to account for every dollar that goes through an account. And the way that the appropriations document is split up, s- many of those dollars gets count- get counted twice. So our general account, where our salaries and wages and all of those, um, things come out of, they also come out of the payroll account, so those dollars get counted twice. So where it says, um, we will be spending the sum of two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars is wrong. I do not have two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to spend. Um, but again, it is just for transparency of where we are shifting funding through. Once it comes into a budget, I'll count how it's going out for payroll, it just gets counted twice. I promise you, I'm not gonna put us bankrupt, so, um, anyway, the, um, this document has been on file here at the office since, um, February thirteenth. We do have an ad, um, set to go out in The Voice saying that it's been on file, um, I can't remember the day, but Chris is awesome, he got that figured out, so, um, and so this is really just something for you guys to look through, make sure that I haven't, um, messed up the numbers, see any hu- huge discrepancies. Chris and I have both gone through it three or four times, but this is not to be approved until the March meeting, so that you guys have plenty of time to look through it. So, and then, again, anybody in the public who has any questions, if they wanna come look at this document, please sit down with me and ask, 'cause otherwise, it'll make no sense.
I always used to enjoy watching Ray try to prepare this.
Oh, it's such an easier process now.
Entertainment.
Yeah, it's kind of like learning long division without a calculator, is how Ray used to do it, and I've just put it into a calculator format. So much easier now.
Well, Ray and technology.
Text messages were hard.
Alright, any, uh, any questions, uh, for Director Lance on the, uh, drafted budget and appropriations?
No, but I think you need to resend it to me.
I found it in the, uh, folder under ordinances.
You did?
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's where I found it.
It was in the original email that...
That's where it's at. Weird.
Yeah.
Of course, shouldn't.
I know, right?
Rachel and technology.
Listen, her set up these little automatics for the folder thing, so, I appreciate it for it, but I had no idea.
Okay, moving on. Uh, I- Agenda item number nine, presentation of the executive director's goals with possible action.
So I set sheet of paper for those, each of your seats, before you sat down. Most of these are going to look familiar, because a lot of the things that I'm working on are multi-year goals, so I keep them on here. But the two new ones that you will see, and I'll go through each of them, but the new commissioners, it is part of my contract to present a certain number of goals that I will accomplish in a year, in a year's time, or make a certain amount of headway on. So my first goal is to develop community engagement through community forums and surveys. I mentioned last month that I, we have a new staff on, through the development coordinator position, Kara Sahagan. This is part of her main, one of her main tasks right now, so she's working with Dr. Megan Owens from the ARPTA department, who has a lot of background in surveys, and developing a general feedback survey for us, so that we can put out, just get a feel for, how are people enjoying our parks, how are they enjoying our programs, are they, what they're looking for, is there something else, is there something in the, a certain facility that they'd like to see as improved? Very standard for park districts to have, and now we will finally meet that standard. And the community forums, that is, that is something I wanted us to look into, yes, very much like the Parks and Rec series, where we go and sit at a table and people come and tell us what they think. Some of them will be focused on a specific project. We need to have some sort of documentation on public input on, on other projects that we're pursuing. Minus a group of people coming to a meeting, I think my first year as director stating they wanted the lights and here's why, for the Veterans Park baseball diamonds. I have no other public input officially documented, although I get, you know, stopped on the street all the time, that's not official documents. So these, these will provide us a forum to have paperwork that I can submit as grants and back up the work that we're doing. I've done, started doing a lot of research, I mentioned, on the green infrastructure. We've been working on different practices that will make our organization more eco-conscious. So through that research is my goal to implement different green practices and green infrastructure through the district where it's feasible. This is an expensive undertaking that we're, we're going through. It's the right choice, and it is the right thing for us to do, but it will be step by step. So, you know, we found out the cost of biodegradable plates and silverware the other day, and so it's, it's going to take some time. But again, it is something that I think most of our staff are bought in with, we know it's the right thing to do, and it is a board directive, so we're going to do it. As always, I'm going to continue to work on our fundraising efforts for the development of Veterans Park. Very excited to have one set of lights going in, but we have three more builds to go, so that has not stopped. Continue park modification and renovation and beautification plan. This is very simply bringing our parks up to standard, taking off the duct tape and making, making them presentable parks. So this year, you know, certain things that we're doing, replacing some of the water fountains. A lot of them don't work, which is unfortunate. So we're going to replace those with the tube water fountains that you have water bottle fillers, that you can fill your brandy, be the change water bottles with. And, you know, we're, we're going to try to make them appealing and, and, you know, usable, make sure they work. Or, gosh, I don't know, me and Jeff are going through different opportunities, each day that are different, that we're looking at installing, gazebo, light view, just something, some things that will, again, make the parks more appealing and provide new opportunities for people to engage in our parks. So, I, I believe this will continue to be on here, the cultivate relationship with local legislators, that has proven to be extremely fruitful. Very thankful that Nori Hannah joined us at the IPRA conference in Chicago in January. She has proven to be an extremely beneficial advocate for us in Springfield, and so I want to continue to foster that relationship and learn from her. She's been quite the mentor as well, and we appreciate her advocacy for us. And then, as always, cultivating community relationships beneficial to the park district. There are amazing businesses in McComb that are just looking to, to help out in whatever ways they can to make McComb a great place to eat, live, play. So, you know, we're going to continue to work with as many organizations as possible. You know, right now, Neil is on a tour, getting pictures with all of the people who have sponsored a hole at Ball Four. Our, our mini golf course desperately needs new carpeting on the holes, and so I think we're up to thirteen, thirteen businesses who have stepped up and sponsored a hole at Ball Four Family Entertainment Center. So those will be announced as he continues to get all of the pictures taken, but, you know, it's, it's great to see our community continue to step up and, and help out as they can. So, yeah. There's obviously more that will happen. These are my seven things I'm going to accomplish, six things I'm going to accomplish this year, but, you know, that would, that would be my folder document.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Henry.
On, on number one, I think it's great that Dr. Owens is involved, she's got a lot of, a lot of expertise. But on the surveys, I'm wondering whether there would be a chance for the board to look at those before they go out.
Sure. Yeah, they're ready, I guess I could have Kara shoot you guys the draft.
Kind of just to sort of get a feeling whether there's some topics that we might want to see included.
Sure.
Because I know we've had some conversations about taking the next step from the vision statement and moving on to the strategic planning. And getting all of that coordinated at the start is always a little bit better than trying to drag it around a little afterwards.
Absolutely. Yeah. I'll get that sent over to you guys, hopefully tomorrow, unless Megan is digging through them, I'll have those corrections.
And those, I know we had talked a little bit about it, but my brain went blank again with the surveys, what were mostly online, people filling them out via social media or the website?
Yeah, they'll be constantly available online, and then when we first announce them, we'll take them, maybe we'll set up with the old diary, or talk to the Rotary groups, or, you know, we want to have some, they'll, they'll be sitting at Sharon's desk in the front, so there, there are, will be ways people can fill them out for those who would prefer not to do the social media route or the website route, but, yeah, for the most part, they will be constantly available through those means.
Great. Is your time wanting on that?
We're hoping to publish it beginning of March. So a couple of weeks.
Yeah, let, yeah, let it run ongoing or?
Oh, yeah, it'll be ongoing. We'll, we'll make a push for it maybe a month or so, but after that, it'll just be a general, a general available survey.
So at the end of the agenda item, it says with possible action, are we, as a board, wanting to have more added to this, which Rachel did mention, she has lots more things that could be, but we'd be here all night.
I think one of the things we, when we initially created the contract, we, we thought of these goals as sort of things that ride on top of the daily management administrative kinds of things that are just inherently part of the job. So what specific sort of additional projects going beyond, or what are, what are the, what the director thinks are the crucial issues? So it's not like, in fairness to Rachel, it's not like she's going to do just these six.
We're not going to tire down the details. You know, a lot of these encompass ten or twelve different things. I mean, when you open the box about, you know, park modification and renovations and beautification plan, I mean, that's a lot, but generally speaking, that's part of the yearly duties that we would hope she would perform.
Yeah.
So we like you keeping it short, but we understand there's information in the daily procedures that need to be done, and that keeps our job easier as board members. I was prepared to vote on this. Do we need to move, make a motion then, to accept the annual goals presented by Director Lenz as provided to us?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Very good, okay.
Move that we accept.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Posed? All right, very good. Item, or agenda item number ten, a report from attendees of the IAPD slash IPRA state Who would like to go first? Commissioner Edwards, would you like to?
Sure, I'll take the stab.
All right.
Try to keep it brief. I attended different classes that were geared towards the newly elected officials, and I took a couple of classes in that, in those tracks. One was the use of social media, which is very eye-opening and awakening that you need to be careful what you do and say on social media, it can be considered as not private, it's a very public thing. I also attended a seminar on leading the way, and that was for board members becoming a board leader, that was great and very informative. I also attended a track on better meetings with the Roberts Rules of Order, and I also attended park district financing, which all of these were very eye-opening. I went to the luncheon awards and was really astounded on how much work actually gets done by park districts around the state, and what great works are done, especially in the area of Special Number, that was a very eye-opening experience for me. And got to sit at the table with esteemed state rep Nori Hammond, that was a great day. The exhibition hall was much larger than I expected, with tons of, with tons of interactive things, tons of fun. There's also tons of freebies and complimentary food, it was, it was an amazing, it was spectacular, I would say, is definitely words that come to mind. And I think the biggest thing I took away from the seminars were that this shouldn't be stressful, this should be fun. And even though it's an elected position and you need to be dedicated and put a lot of time and hours into it, it should, if it ever stops being fun, that's when you need to step away. And I think that's the biggest thing I took away from the whole conference. And I got to get to know some of the board members more intimately, and it was just the overall great thing, and it's money well spent by the park district to send newly elected people and old commissioners, it's a great annual convention.
That's just old. We were not looking at you, I'm sorry.
Older.
Couldn't remember that.
And that's all I have.
That's great. Hey, thank you. Thank you, Director Lenz. Commissioner Henry, would you like to add?
I'm not sure how many of these meetings I've been to. But I was glad to hear Commissioner Edwards talk about feeling that the investment was good. I think we've heard that from people who've gone to their first one. I happen to be on the Illinois Association of Park District's Board of Trustees, which is sort of, needs to be said, so that I don't, at the interest of full disclosure. People often wonder about, you know, what comes out of, out of these meetings, and I, I've been to these meetings, not just in Illinois, but regularly attended as many as eight other state meetings over the time that I've been in the field. The one in Illinois is just so far better. It is beginning to rival the state, excuse me, the national conference, and the reason for that is the park districts, we're one of seven states that has park districts, and so that there's a defined audience that isn't dependent on somebody else in the tax revenue and things. The field is here, it's, it's well-established, and Illinois is a large state to begin with. One of the things that the CEO of the IAPD, Illinois Association of Park District, Peter Murphy, has mentioned, and he, he mentioned it again during the Board of Trustees meeting, was that we had over four thousand attendees at the meeting. That attendance is greater, now, this is, this was what kicked, that attendance is greater than at Florida, Texas, and California state meetings combined.
Wow.
That draws in a lot of people, so I, I really do think it is money well-spent. I would encourage you folks that are, that are out there, when you get a chance, do go up. It's networking heaven, but the amount of information, you cannot possibly, you know, it takes years to be able to work your way through some of that, so I found it refreshing to be up there again and see some people get to know Mr. Edwards a little bit better. Always good to know who you're working with, and.
Would you like to say a few things, too?
Yeah, this is my, I believe this was my eleventh conference, and I was thoroughly impressed. I mean, I've always enjoyed the conference, and there's always some sort of value. I wish I could have doubled myself to go to all of the sessions that I saw value in, but the ones that I did go to were excellent. And there was a very common theme that I saw emerge through all of them, and, you know, John has heard me say several times, and Phil got his first experience of it, as soon as I get back, sending a message that says, here's what we're doing, here's the things that I learned, hashtag conference mind. So it's usually a very scary thing for the board president when I get back from conference as to what is about to occur, but I think it's a.
It's a thrill, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I would say this was probably one of the, the better IAPD conferences that I, I've had the opportunity to attend. It was really, really good.
By the way, if you're wondering about where this field stands in the state and where the IAPD stands in the state, about how many state senators and representatives do you think?
Oh, my gosh. There, there was.
Thirty or forty? Dozens.
Oh, I was going to say sixty.
That's fine by me.
I think there were thirty or forty.
Yeah. The newly elected president of the Senate was there.
Yeah.
Like he didn't have other pressing kinds of things to do. So the organization itself, and the field itself.
attracts a lot.
Yeah.
Nori mentioned how impressed she was with how many legislators were present. She was thoroughly. She was thoroughly surprised.
And a shout out to Noreen for joining us, she's.
Her first time, yeah, it's pretty cool. Something for you to look forward to next year. I'm on it, putting it in the books.
Am I back around for it? I was there last year and I was very impressed by it.
Yeah.
And learned a lot, so I know what your value is. I mean, there is a lot of information.
And another shout out also to IPRA for assisting three, three of our staff members in going. I believe they have a lot of, a lot of things learned over the weekend. Yeah.
Good, that's awesome. Excellent. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number eleven. Open Commissioner presentation and discussion of future agenda items.
I hesitate to bring this up.
No, don't, not this evening.
I already know where it does, which.
That's fine, but.
Oh, that's it, you know, you can, you can.
I, I would like to just, maybe outside discussion with you and President Weiss about what timelines are we looking at on the presentation that was held today? What's our next step that we're looking at with the follow-up with her and what her proposals are with the park district? And I don't know what our timetable is, you know, we've done a vision state, statement out there, and I know it kind of fits along with what we've been talking about anyway with, you know, adding stuff to the parks and locations, but I would like to kind of have a, some kind of discussion or follow-up with that, with her and the organization.
Can I suggest, maybe the process for that would be email your thoughts, questions, observations to Rachel? And maybe they could be brought up at the next meeting due to open meetings considerations.
Okay.
Rather than having sidebars.
Ready to go?
Thank you.
Okay. Alright.
I'll tell you that strategic plan is the text message that Phil and John got from me. It's the next step after the vision statement, so, yeah, you're, you're right in line with the things that we were hearing from the conference.
She has her, her whiteboard and her office is full.
I wasn't up there today to find that out.
I know, I know, I apologize, I have a meeting.
Five minutes is all I asked.
Alright.
That's no problem.
Well, any other things that you'd like to bring up before we move on to our final agenda item? Okay, that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we stand adjourned, thank you all very much.